Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, for the roll call. Please turn your attention to the evening. The character of the month is dream. If one dreams without leaps of imagination, we lose the excitement of possibility. Let us remember to dream, and let us remember the character of the month, which is dream. At this time, Counsel, we have before you the approval of agenda for the evening. As we discussed in work session, we hope to only act on those matters that were discussed in work session on this past Thursday. So let us keep that in mind. However, I did receive a call on two items that were to be taken up at work session, but we weren't aware that Auburn was on the call with us. So if you all remember, we did have a program of work personnel project related to Auburn, University Pay Plan. We did have that as unfinished business, and so I would like to add that item under unfinished business for us to review it to act hard. And additionally, we had before us an agreement between the City of Selma and Dallas County provided for the collection of City of Selma property taxes by Dallas County Tax Collector. We just simply need to approve the agreement, which allows the mayor to enter into that agreement with the county collecting our at the law property taxes. And so I'm requesting that those two items be added under unfinished business, as these were matters that have already been brought before the Council of the Board and discussed on numerous occasions. Other than that, the only other items up for discussion and also for vote are those items which were discussed at our work sessions. Is there any objection with adding those items to the agenda of unfinished business? All right? With that said, is there a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of those two items under unfinished business? Is there a second? Please allow the minutes to reflect that it was moved by Councilman Johnson and properly seconded by Councilwoman James to approve our agenda for the evening with the addition of the two items as stated by the Chair. Are we ready for the question? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
President Young.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hargill.
Yes.
Councilwoman Christie Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Carmichael. Councilwoman James.
Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jimmison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Janie Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes. Thank you, Counsel, for your votes. Next item on our agenda for the evening is our consent agenda for Tuesday, April the 12th, 2022. As all of these items were discussed in detail at our work session this past Thursday, there are seven items up for consent vote. Item number one, to approve a budget amendment for cemetery department to transfer a blessing, transfer $5,000 from account number 1.6017-51038 and $10,000 from account number 1.6017-51036 to account number 1.6017-51055 to purchase grass cutting equipment. Item number two, to approve a purchase order with blue ops for the cemetery department in the amount of $14,448, with funding dispersed from account number 1.6017-51055 for two X mark zero turn mowers. Item number three, to approve reimbursement of the library in the amount of $6,732.06 for hurricanes data damages. Item number four, to approve a budget amendment for state gas tax fund in the amount of $287,000. And for more discussion, you can see the attachment for the court now. Item number five, to approve a budget amendment in the amount of $144,850 for correction in the tourism budget line, 3.6057100. Item is included twice in budget. Item number six, to approve resolution R146-21/22, the American Rescue Plan Act. And then item number seven, to approve resolution R155-21/22, reimbursement of first responder salaries through the ARF, American Rescue Plan. Are there any questions or comments concerning our consent agenda for the evening? Yes, I see Councilwoman Thomas.
Oh, item number four, I want to get a good understanding of is this the new money for our gas or tax? We didn't get the 2021 fund. So my thing is that the bigger the toll, is this the one for April, $287,000? We didn't do, we didn't do, we didn't get our funds from 2020.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Treasurer, would you please address that question submitted by Councilwoman Thomas?
Okay, Kendra. That is the gasoline tax, not the, that is the gasoline tax, not the Alabama Justice Department of Attorney.
Yes. For the one that we are doing, that we're going to approve for this state gas tax. Right, because when we get the budget, we budget the expenditures, but we do not budget the revenue. I don't want to know what's involved.
All right. Are there any additional questions concerning our consent agenda? Yes, Councilwoman.
I just want to clarify, item number five is the, when you take the amount, the total plan, that's like total, like the actual.
All right. And ladies and gentlemen, if you look at item number seven, to approve resolution R155, that may be a typo, it may be R153. That is the number, the correct number for the resolution. It's R153-21/22. All right? With those comments and that correction in the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve our consent agenda for Tuesday, April the 12th, 2022? All right, I think I heard Councilwoman Janie Thomas first. Is there a second? All right. And I'm going to count that as Councilman Johnson. So it was moved by Councilwoman Janie Thomas and properly seconded by Councilman Michael Johnson to approve our consent agenda for Tuesday, April the 12th, 2022, with the correction to item number seven, which is to correct to read resolution R153-21/22. Counsel, are we ready for a question? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
President Young.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hargill.
Yes.
Councilwoman Christie Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Carmichael. Councilwoman James.
Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jimmison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Janie Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes. Thank you, Counsel, for your votes. At this time, I know that we did on our, at our work session on this last Thursday, we had the announcements, Councilwoman was made announcements at that time, so hopefully that was sufficient. But are there any additional announcements that need to be made to the body of this afternoon?
An announcement?
Any announcements? Yes, sir.
If I could, I want to, I want to, on, 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 the collective, you know, I can definitely come up with a few minutes, we'll leave that and we will go to the middle of the fourth, but since we both here, we probably won't put an announcement. We do, we got it.
Any objection, Madam Counsel? And proceed.
Mr. Johnson, Michael Johnson. Mary Sue.
Yes, sir.
Is it a mic there, Councilman Johnson? Do you have a mic?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I am Lady Johnson, and I am, Michael Johnson, Maxine Thomas. I'm also a law student at Columbia School of Law, and I'm here tonight on behalf of an organization, which is called Black Law Student Association, and also, and we were privileged to collect bonus to our school, to my classmates, in support of the Warden community. And I had the honor of inviting them out last month for this Saturday, thanks for your support, to experience the history itself, and really enjoyed it, and we all came with this bill to collect bonus in order to support the community. And without further ado, I just want to present this shake to my father, the amount of $1,000 for the Warden community.
Somebody got, somebody got a camera? This is this. Father son confirmation here.
This is your brother.
That is my brother.
He could have kept that secret, but that's.
Thank you. Let's do it.
Great job.
Wonderful to see when young people don't forget stuff wherever they go, they come back and, and remember it is also wonderful to see, in addition to being in law school, you serve our country with pride, with pride. Yes, ma'am.
I have another announcement.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, Sunday is Easter Sunday. Our Lord Chapel, A M U, is having an outdoor Easter event, a community, which will be a time that we need to gather, put on, sing, dancing, speeches, and worship by community. And I think this is a good thing that, well, there's one, we have a treat blocked off, and we inviting all the community to come out in our neighborhood, because he needs to do right now at, at this time, with Pastor, Pastor, Pastor.
Thank you for that announcement. Any other announcement, council members? Yes, ma'am, Councilwoman James.
I'd like to say good evening to everyone. It's going to be very clear. I just want to, I have never met Taylor, but young lady that left the car, everybody, I just want to tell her thank you, to have someone to draw something, to say you're doing a fantastic job. I just want to say who else are her parents, and who else Taylor is, and David James, and thank you for what you did. And also, on, on the next council meeting on the 26th, I will introduce our youth ambassadors, and I want to thank the Council for allowing me to choose these young people and get them started, they, that too, send to you, yourselves, to the council.
Very good, very good, very good. Any other announcements, council members? Any other announcements? And I don't know if this is directly associated with what Councilwoman James was saying, but I understand that these little decorations that have been provided to us for the Easter holiday have been provided by the Youth of Cornerstone Church, just coming from their youth department, they wanted to treat the council. So let's thank our young people for remembering that. They are giving nice arrangements, they prepared for council, and also a little goodie bag. So thank you for that, we appreciate it. And that young man has the right out there, that deserves another round of applause. Thank you for those announcements, counsel. We'll now move on to our citizens' request, as we have, I'm sorry, minutes, oh, I was moving. Yes, hour minutes, I was ready, and thank you, Councilwoman Thomas. At this time, our clerk will provide us with our minutes for the evening.
Good evening, Counsel.
Good evening.
You should have before you the special call meeting minutes of February 17th, 2022, the regular meeting minutes of February 22nd, 2022, the special call meeting minutes of March 2nd, 2022, and the regular meeting minutes of March 8th, 2022. These minutes are before you for your consideration for approval. Are there any corrections or questions concerning either of those?
Are there any corrections, deletions, or comments regarding those minutes that have been presented by our clerk? I think there was a question about the March 8 minutes. I think we needed to make sure that there was a portion there that said lead of municipalities, it may have said Attorney General's opinion, but I think it was an opinion request from the Alabama League of Municipalities. I think that may have been, I don't know if that's been corrected or not.
It relates to the executive session?
Yes.
Okay, what we have, and again, I'm so sorry, I'm out of the council meeting on March 8th, and I want to thank you, council members and citizens again for prayer for my family, but executive session meeting minutes stated that the Attorney General's opinion was what you all.
I think that's where, there should have been Alabama League of Municipalities opinion, that wasn't a Attorney General's opinion request. I think that's the correction. Okay, thank you.
So that the correction needs to state in legal municipalities.
Yeah, remove Attorney General's opinion and put Alabama League of Municipalities. That was my question. All right, are there any other corrections, additions, or deletions to the minutes that have been provided by our clerk for the evening? Hearing no corrections, additions, or any other deletions, is there a motion to approve those minutes, the correction made to the March 8, 2022 minutes? Is there a second? Please allow the minutes to reflect that it was moved by Councilwoman Christie Thomas and properly seconded by Councilman Michael Johnson to approve all of those minutes with the correction for the March 8, 2022 minutes. Are we ready for a question? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
President Young.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hargill.
Yes.
Councilwoman Christie. Councilwoman Carmichael. Councilwoman James.
President, yes.
Councilwoman Randolph.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jimmison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Janie Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes. Excellent, thank you, counsel. And now, since we've had our announcements, now we can move on to our citizens' requests. And we have three speakers on for the evening. We're going to remind everyone that the five minutes is one of the lot for our speakers, so we ask that you please remember that and be mindful, help and personal, when the time is up, the Chair will say time. So let's remember, five minutes and our three speakers. First, we have Mr. Tom Bentley here, and he can speak regarding first reading and city attorney utilization.
I'd like to retain my hope, but I meant to add interruption, please. With three of y'all, I'm a returned person, and with the six of y'all, I have to add some of you. My name is Tom Bentley, former city council member. I work in the Department of Public Works, so I'm a little around the city, I created two little groups, it has over 9,000 members, somehow it's on history, somehow it's politics, so many of y'all are members, by the way. I was wondering here about the first reading. Now, I don't have any problem memorializing people in street names or monuments or flags, so I'm going to get that out of, like, what I think that problem is in process. Aristotle said, love is lodging, freedom of passion, but what we saw on the March 2nd was passion, that was the Lynch model. There was no first reading, there was no resolution, there was no public meeting, there was no committee assignment, there was no advertising, there was none. City got nothing, no feedback, none of y'all politic with the idea of giving your citizens less feedback and transparency. Therefore, on the other side, you'll get more transparency remaining. That didn't happen in the States. Now, we got Plant Street coming up, and we got everything coming up, and I would just like to request that we see a lot more transparency in upcoming many changes. So, and something like Ms. Thomas said, or Council Lady Thomas said, is that these meetings that y'all have, work sessions, they're not going in public record, and we need that, we need that feedback, and I need it. Now, that means I would like to turn my attention to the city attorney. Mr. Maxine, you know, we didn't have a. We, we had to, you know, this and that to get somebody to type stuff up for us, but like getting billboards off the city property, I did that on a weekend. Imagine the city business license code, me and the administrative committee did that over a week. We did that work, and then we handed it, we got a lady to type it for us, I think it was 150 bucks for to type it up for us in resolution form. We didn't pay it, we didn't have, we had a city engineering department with five people in it, we don't have now, but we did have a lot of them. Y'all are very, very, very fortunate. But let's see who Mr. Madison works for. He went and worked for 17 department heads, or he responds to 17 department heads, 11 council subcommittees, eight boards, nine city council members, one council secretary, and now we're talking about a revenue committee, so there's one more, and on the 28th, you'll attend that meeting. So there's another 49 people. Let's talk about his relationship with the mayor. The mayor sits down there every day and makes 10, probably 100 decisions, and he has financial considerations, moral considerations, and legal considerations, and historical considerations, how this figures, and the future. So he means this man too. And what I'm saying, that's the only thing we all had on 38, we all approved four resolutions. That was the tax collector, 105, you had 128, excuse me, 142 on 6, 168 on putting a record service on, on a list, and then finally 171 on Green Street change. Okay, but his job's not over. He's still got to go to the administrative team and work this in with the city clerk, with the administrator, with the mayor, and everybody else. And so he is under that kind of pressure, and then, but last Thursday, last Thursday on 38, y'all gave him three resolutions, three resolutions. One, Ms. Thomas asked for a resolution on the process of somebody applying for a board. And Mr. Young, President Young, asked for citizens' complaints, a resolution on citizens' complaints. And then Ms. Thomas asked for a resolution on a step-by-step budget process. What you did, you just handed it to him, said, here's your project. You know, we used to do those. I can see administrative resolutions, where you're going to move money around in accounts and stuff, but this is, this is committee work. He's not an HR person, he's not a customer service person, he's not a budget expert. He's an accountant. I heard him call that when they asked him at the finance meeting week before last, what are we supposed to do with this money when he comes back in the budget? He was real quick to say, I'm not an accountant. He's not. So what we're doing, I can see he'll be in use for the little resolution stuff, but there's a lot of homework here that y'all aren't doing. Either you don't know how to do it, you don't want to do it, or you don't think you can do it, or you don't think you're supposed to do it. And that's all I'm asking for, is to try to get some support for him, and try to take a little bit of this off. We have committees, we can pay for committees.
Thank you. Very good. All right. Our next citizen on for tonight is Mr. Willie Thomas, and he's here to discuss the veterans' law. Good evening, Mr. Thomas.
Good evening.
And I think it's time for a man uniform comes up, we need to applaud him.
John Reed, um, certainly, he doesn't have the office, is. Well, my name is Willie Thomas, United States Army, comes for you to advocate sports, and is a volunteer, trying to do a better job for John Barby, not effective Barby, but United States Marine, and also he's a white, he's Dr. Martin, he was killed, all those messages, he stayed out of it. We have got to talk with the city people, the government, the Alabama Department of American Legion, and they're on board, they want to know, you know, if, you know, to get this to y'all, see if y'all support it, and basically they are ready to come over. So that I have Mr. John, I have five minutes to try to bring it out, so I have Mr. John Reed, so he can bring out a little bit more of him.
Sure. My name is Reed.
John Reed.
Reed, okay.
He's an organization that I presented a long debate.
All right. You may speak, Mr. John.
Good evening, everybody, can you hear me?
Good evening.
Well, first off, I want to say thank you to the mayor, council, residents of Selma, and Willie for bringing us to your attention tonight. I've had the honor of walking through Selma in 2019, 2020. We did a walk in 2021 for veterans, and this year, on August 6th, at 10:00 a.m., I would love the support of the city to do a walk in honor of United States Marine Corps Sergeant John Wesley Barbie, who was a foot soldier for Dr. King. His wife, Patricia Barbie, is a Gold Star wife, and for many years now, she's been advocating for Gold Star families all across the country. And in her honor, and in her husband's honor, we would like to walk across the Edmund Pettus Bridge from the city side to the monument side, and we would love the city's support to have a police officer, or firefighter, or, you know, whatever, to have an escort over the bridge, front and rear. Mrs. Barbie is older in age, and she does walk slowly, but we've, I've already talked about it with her, whatever it takes to get her over the bridge, she's going to carry her husband's burial flag, and we have a opportunity and an honor to have Gold Star families from all over the country in attendance as well, to be a part of this historic event on the anniversary date of her husband being killed in action. So we would just love to have the city's support. Lodging will be taken care of by WalkForVets.org, August 5th through the 6th. I will arrange transport for Mrs. Barbie from Savannah, Georgia, and I will bring her to Selma and then take her back home as well, and we would just love to have your support.
I would love to have your support on this, on my, my country.
And ladies and gentlemen, this is my first time, Mr. Thomas did it for us, we did another veterans' law a couple of months ago, and we want to thank him for his service, want to thank you for your service, John, and also for best for walk, not, walk for best. And so we want to thank you all for what you're doing, because as is stated before, Selma is definitely a veteran's town. We have a large veterans' population here in Selma, and we're grateful for their service and what they've done, and we're also grateful to give them their flowers while they're still able to stand. So thank you, sir. And what was the date of that meeting? August 6th, 10 o'clock, remember? August the 6th at 10 o'clock at the Edmund Plaza. All right. Keep that in mind, and we will be making that announcement again to invite everyone to take in and participate. Let's give Mr. Thomas another round of applause.
Thank you all.
Yes, sir. You do too. Thank you, thank you, thank you for your service. Our next speaker for the evening is Attorney Donovan McGuire, and he's here to address the city regarding scholarships. Attorney McGuire, good evening, sir.
Malapies, scholarship, love for all mankind. Those are the aims of our fraternity. To the council, to the council president, and to the mayor of the short Selma city, I bring my reasons on behalf of the Brothers of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated, Delta Phi Tau Tau Chapter. Donovan McGuire serves as vice president and also chairperson of the scholarship committee for the John and Taylor Scholarship. I come before the council to make an announcement to you and to citizens of Selma and to your respective boards about our scholarship. It is open, our John and Taylor Scholarship, since 1949, the Brothers of Alpha have given out scholarships, told over several hundreds of thousands of dollars to high schools, to graduate in the black area, and this year is no. And this year is no different. We recognize that we're going through a trying times with COVID. But yet it's still finances for college, they still exist. Tuition is still on the rise, no matter how much COVID is impacting us financially. So we wanna make sure that we're making a best bit into the youth of Selma, because so go the youth of Selma, those so go Selmas, Alabama. Uh our scholarship opened on March the twenty ninth and it closes um April twenty ninth. So we got about seventeen days left. This year we did something different because of COVID, we went to switch to online process. So we're asking everybody, you can go to our page, it says the Black Belt Alphas, and there's a scholarship, there's a link, uh Google scholarship. So you can input your information in. So that way we can process it and hopefully we're gonna award some scholarships out to deserve it. Uh and who's eligible will be high school students throughout the black belt. So we definitely want these schools to apply. We're talking to counselors to make sure we make sure that to the students because they need it. I know our college and our taxes, it's uh on students and parents and their children, please encourage them to apply. And I would say any questions you guys may have.
Any questions?
Counselor Thomas? I have a question. Um you know, I've talked to you about it before. I have some young men that um their family um need um, I wanted to get them to connect. I thought that policy, they're very active, they um they come in hours, they come out of my district. And I really would like to be able to apply for the help so.
Yes, ma'am, ma'am. You can give me or you can give me any black belt alfa, uh we can help you on direct into a scholarship. And with the rubric, it's it's not so solely on who has the highest GPA. We look at the needs of the applicants with.
And I wanna emphasize economic need. These are not just the kids with the high GPA. There's a portion of the rubric that is designed for kids with economic need to go to college. Thank you, Attorney McGuire.
Thank you so much for your time.
We appreciate you. Thank you. And and Council Johnson, that's another one of my brothers, Daniel Perkins. Yes, ma'am. Y'all want to chat?
I I have, I have, I have probably moved so fast, but I gotta come in.
Okay, okay.
I I wanna address what you were talking about. If you give me a few, I I I I don't know whether you're gonna bring this issue up, but I do have a resolution, not asking, it's something that right, it's something I want to present to maybe help uh a mayor, not mayor, uh turn this medicine out. Because we have a contracted attorney on board. And my my suggestion was that we raise him back up, press checkup to help some of his mold. Now that's my suggestion. And I think it will work one hundred percent if you do that. Because I too think his mold is heavy and we put more load on him. Yes, I told him down one day, but he know why I told him down, I'm gonna build him back up. So uh we have a uh, I have a project that we're in contract, we already have a contract, we already signed this thing, to come and help his mold, we definitely know.
Thank you. All right. I think that concludes all of our citizens concerned. Thank you, citizens, for staying within the five minute quarter. We appreciate you for that. And now we'll move on to our next item on the agenda for the evening, and that's the mayor's report.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
But you know, I appreciate everything that was just one. The support for veterans law. The service for turn pass is comments that you made, guys, were all. Thank you, you know, al- uh. All give it a little bit of help, yeah. The the certain items that the agenda that uh were addressed and approved. First item to attorney for uh for uh the acquisition of that, all the documents quoted there to approve and consent. Thank you, so got this counter public library person. Buildings, stuff that benefit, that is approved and consented. Uh item five, JAG grant, budget amendment request for restricted JAG grant funds, chief, Kenton, Fullford. Uh I think you discussed that with you during the work session. And I'm not certain, I didn't make the consent agenda, I don't think it did. I don't think it did. I didn't see it, I checked it off, it did. Uh and so we want to, no. So I just wanted to bring that to the council's attention, that favorable consideration of that.
Oh, thank you, ma'am. For some reason, I thought that it did, it was a oversight. Um counsel, at our work session, we did hear from uh Chief Fullford uh regarding uh that JAG grant. Uh are there any uh questions or comments uh concerning uh that? Item number three, okay, okay. It's the budget amendment request for restricted JAG grant. Uh and this is uh a request uh to amend uh the budget, uh there's line items. And if you look under item number three, uh he has some information attached to that, I believe. Um Chief, I just uh have a a question, uh I guess, of concern, because I'm trying to remember it and I'm trying to pull it up on my notes. Um is that, do we currently have a a narcotic human within the police department? We we don't, we don't currently have one. Is that something that you're interested in maybe pursuing for the future, uh creating a narcotic human?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. That's what, that was on my mind, asking at the work session, but I forgot, there's a lot of these ones. Are there any other questions uh for any other members of the council?
Yes, sir. Right, right. We have and also that has been signed, definitely not. Yes, sir. I'm not sure, I'm not sure of those people uh in the virtual, uh requested, thanks. Uh so I don't know if you wanna repeat it or because I think it's important, but you know what you ask.
It's a question I asked uh to the city police officer, the crime task force. And uh because I mean really, we need all of the system we can get. And I know the crime task force uh plays a big part in, I guess, a lot of crime we have, we don't have a big. I mean, we're so short in, and we're not thinking of that.
And my answer was, yes, we have assigned officer. It's more than plus, it's not.
Hey, just for some clarity purposes, all right, so uh first, are you requesting a budget amendment in the amount eighteen thousand four hundred and six dollars? That's that first document that I see. And this is uh to take care of the police JAG expenditures that were not budgeted. That's the first document I see. So you're asking for approval of that budget line item request? All right.
Yes, the uh first uh request is to uh about the eighteen thousand four hundred and six for JAG, plus when the budget was done. And the budget was approved uh in January. Not including the budget of uh from our council, so fifteen thousand uh in the JAG. Thousand, that's uh expenditures that depend on the JAG budget, JAG fund. And as you can see, the amount of money in JAG take that, so those allegations, those expenditures need to be taken.
So we have really two things before us, counsel. We have the first matter involving which, as you explained, we didn't have enough for the JAG uh grant to cover those expenses. That's the first item in the amount eighteen thousand four hundred and six dollars. Uh you go ahead, Counselor Thomas.
Yes, when I remember Chief, I actually uh the last time you came forward. And actually, the balance that I seen you did uh treat, that we had a balance of thirty thirty thousand. So in that period of time, um you're saying now that the balance was eighteen thousand?
Eighteen thousand was awarded.
Okay. But then you came, remember the last time you came, you asked us some equipment out of the JAG grant?
I didn't ask.
You asked for the box of uh, it was uh, it was some like the, the cameras or something. It was, it was not this year. It was the last, the last year when you came and asked. And that's why I was going with uh, on the thing that you said. So now you're sending through eighteen thousand back.
That must have been any different than our grant at that time.
It was not the JAG right there.
It possibly could have been, it possibly could have been, like I said.
Okay. I just wanna give you clarification, I just wanna give you clarification.
Okay. All right, counsel.
Okay.
All right. So counsel, we actually have two uh adjustments to our budget. Uh one uh both involving JAG grant. Uh first is the amount of eighteen thousand four hundred and six dollars as listed on the document. You can see where that's going to. And then the other totals to an amount of seventy seven thousand seven hundred thirty six dollars and fifty seven cents. Uh and this is the transfer expenditures to the police department that exceeded JAG grant. Go ahead, Counselor Thomas.
See, just a clarification. He gave us a balance of thirteen thousand of the eighteen thousand.
Like I said, mysterious, that this was awarded and the council approved it in January, that's where we.
It was awarded, the, the grant was awarded in uh January, awarded through the, for eighteen thousand. But before it was awarded, expenditures coming out of the line, I reported JAG grant and it's going to split the seven thousand.
We're just trying to get these items right because they exceeded the amount that was the reward of the grant. So this will correct that.
This is correcting the budget, it's so good, you might as well take the order, so that it can be brought in, uh with, you know, the potential.
Very good. With that said, counsel, is there most to approve uh budget line transfers with the amount eighteen thousand four hundred and six dollars? And also the amount of seventy seven thousand seven hundred thirty six dollars and fifty seven cents. All right, is there a second? All right, please allow Mr. Reflector to move, my Councilwoman Jane Thomas, and promptly second to my Councilwoman Jensen to approve the transfers as stated by the chair. Are we ready for the question? Roll call, man, clerk.
President Young?
Yes.
Counselor Harville?
Yes.
Counselwoman Christie Thomas?
Yes.
Counselwoman Carmichael?
Counselwoman Jane?
Yes.
Counselwoman Randolph?
Yes.
Counselwoman Jensen?
Yes.
Counselwoman Jamie Thomas?
Yes.
Counselwoman John?
Yes. Thank you, Council members.
Uh thank you, Mr. Young. Item four, taking care of the budget amendment for the sugar gas tax fund. Uh we're taking care of the consent agenda, item five, tourist budget correction, uh hundred forty four thousand, that's a clear. The second agenda as well, on item six, uh was not addressing the consent agenda. I think the council wanted to uh pass that for a discussion.
Yes, yes, and took that mainly involved Counselwoman Carmichael that I'm seeing present. Uh can we just hold on that until he adds something?
Yes, sir. Uh item number seven, uh the land fair drive uh project, there is no project that I think, and I think it moves to discuss that.
Do you have any question?
I think, yeah, I think is this a, the, I wanna make sure if I have not understanding this, if I have not understanding.
I'm not sure. I think that, I think it was, uh, my understanding was there was a, a grant, a big grant. In the land fair area, I guess it's more the fair route uh project. And I think one of the stipulations were that the, that budget here, that the audit was. And it's my understanding that it's been completed. My question, I guess, is, is that correct? And then, is that a project that the firm is actively do that, or is that a contract, or is that something we're gonna?
Ms. Wooden, did you understand the questions? You're muted, looks like. You're muted, looks like.
Yes, sir. Um I did not understand your question fully, Councilwoman Harville.
What, what are the, what, what are the, what are the terms?
Okay, so basically, um this is, this is a project that was approved back in twenty eighteen um through the Alabama Department of Environmental Management. And it was for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars um under the state revolving fund loan program. But with that program, there is a fifty percent um loan forgiveness that was approved in twenty nineteen. However, the city was never able to close on the actual loan because in order to go through the underwriting process, you had to have current city audits. And so that has been the holdup for the project and why the project has not moved forward. Because as of right now, there technically isn't a project because the loan was not able to close.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Uh huh. I read a memo and I was uh every time, I was counterproductive every time, with the length of what he's talking about. And would you just say that all of our auditor reports have not been completed? So let me ask you this. Um was this to remind us or are you planning on moving forward after we get through the all of our auditor reports completed? Because we only did uh one for twenty nineteen and we're waiting on twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two. So are you planning on in the, in the, in the future to to move forward and take care of that area on that? Are you trying to get a loan to 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 move forward on this after we finish our audit?
Yes, ma'am. At the time where, when we um have current audits, you know, that would be a decision that would have to be made in consultation with the administration, the council, as well as the engineers. Because as we know, um the dollar amount on that project is probably gonna be drastically different, given inflation because of COVID. And so that is something that once our audits are current, we will have to reevaluate.
Okay. Let me ask you this here. With the land fair drive, land fair drive would not fall in this uh. It will not fall with the drainage on that road, will it? No, it wouldn't fall into this uh, this, this, this loan that you're trying to, you do follow. Would it, would it follow the beginning?
Are you referring to drainage on land fair or resurfacing land fair?
No, I'm referring to what uh.
Yes, it was my understanding, and I repeatedly, I think you mentioned, it was my understanding that there was funding for surfacing of land fair drive, which is, I forgot my G on a few times. It turns off a fair road, but uh Ms. Wooden did inform me that there was, there was never funding to research a land fair.
And that's what I'm saying, yeah. And that's what I'm saying, yeah.
It's all the.
Yes, I see, correct.
Along the, the side.
Okay, that's, that's what I want to get an understanding of, I read her memo, but I did a little research from back in twenty eighteen of what we did. And that's why I wanted to ask you, because I know that we had not finished our audit, and we finished our audit, we're hard on one that, and try to, uh,
Well, it, it, it really, it really is going to determine, uh, cost of it, whether or not it's even feasible to do it based on, on different cost factors, but we'll have to work with each.
Okay, that's all I want to.
Perfect, thank you.
Uh, the item, uh, item eight, uh, you know, item's there. Item nine, uh, council, you know why it's there, uh, we are hoping that one day, uh, someone who, who changed their mind, one goal, one goal. Uh, item ten, the resolution regarding American Rescue Plan Act, uh, was under consent. Item eleven, the resolution regarding the city of Selma reimbursement for its farm and salaries, uh, that was a big deal. Thank you, got that resolved, it's great, uh, and you appreciate that. I do have a couple of, a couple of items that I wanted to, uh, just mention, or sort of announcements, uh, councilman. The, uh, President, you're going to handle those other issues, okay, address those two, I'll skip those two, but I do have a couple of things I'd like to just announce. Uh, Live Help Smart Alabama, uh, I don't know if you all have one of these slides, uh, I just, did you get one of these? Okay, uh, it is April the thirteenth, Live Help Smart Board eight intro meeting. You're invited from one to two P M. You're invited to an important community meeting to discuss issues impacting the health and well-being of residents in your community. Uh, this meeting location will be Mount Eric, uh, Missionary Baptist Church, one twenty South Division Street. Uh, there will also be, uh, a Zoom attendance opportunity, uh, with the Zoom ID and password is on the flyer for those who, uh, choose to attend or to it. Uh, and then there is a reply to Kimberly Spritz, I believe that's correct, uh, pronunciation of last name, the felt on them. This is, uh, being sponsored by the University of Alabama Birmingham Minority Health and Health Disparities Research Center. And so that is again on April the thirteenth, uh, twenty twenty two, in Ward Eight, from one until two, at Mount Eric, Missionary Baptist Church, where Dr. Scott is passing. Uh, and also would like to, uh, express, uh, uh, regret, it's deep sympathy for passing of, uh, is Don Taylor's sister, uh, baby sister, Jocelyn Taylor, uh, transitioned. You know, Don is executive sister, uh, she lost her sister suddenly, sudden death. And the funeral service, uh, is, uh, is going to be this coming Saturday, uh, April the sixteenth. At twelve o'clock noon, the location of the service will be at Jefferson Moore's Gymnasium, the campus of Selma University, fifteen oh one Borton Street, Selma, Alabama. Uh, we, uh, I wanted to publicly express my sincere condolences, uh, for Don and her family, and let her and her family know that we agree with. Uh, that's, uh, the content of my report. I look forward to the remainder of the discussion, thank you. Uh, President, do you want to address the meeting that we are promoting to have on the camera system, what you say to me, do you want to address that? Yeah, we, I, I, uh, President Young and I have agreed that, uh, we need to have a meeting of the leadership, uh, and just, we don't need a, a public meeting. The leadership of the council and the mayor is not, uh, we don't need a public meeting for this, but we want to discuss this camera system. We want to give them a good, clear understanding of what the police department is saying, what the I T department is saying, uh, what we are looking at with this whole solution. And to also hear, uh, the council leadership's position on this issue. Because it really is important that we move on this issue. And so what we're trying to do is simply move the needle by having this conversation. And so, uh, I, I expect this conversation will be happening swiftly, and we look forward to having it.
Uh, did Council Johnson, did Council Johnson?
President, uh, I mean, first one, so, and that's one of the first thing I thought about, both of you and me are getting together. I love it, and I pray the Lord, and all the time I'm together, so we, there's too much going on out there than I was thinking, oh. A lot of guys committing crimes, and they're getting away with it, a lot of people not talking, I don't know why they're not talking. A lot of people seeing the incident that's been on for the last week, where we've lost a lot of, the cameras will, will work. I know it's working because it worked at my business.
And, and for the record, this would not be the first meeting that we've had. Uh, myself, the mayor, Councilwoman Carmichael, uh, Chief Fulford, and Mr. Kimison, uh, had discussed it already before. And so we're hoping that we can have a fruitful discussion, uh, and bring something back, if not, we do, we need to get the back. All right, go ahead, Councilwoman Jane, and then Councilwoman Jensen.
Uh, President, this is not a new issue I'm bringing to the council because I need to discuss this, uh, uh, on small amounts of scale, um, third study. And this, the mayor was talking about, um, the thing, it's not with the council, it's the chief here. I, I, I want to know, uh, Chief Fulford, I want to know what plans do you have in place along with the mayor on trying to deal with some of these situations that we have in itself besides the cameras? Because we, we are having crimes, and we're not hearing anything about anything, we just want to know a little something that you are on a plan that you can tell us. Everybody want to know. Harvey?
Um, what we have done is, uh, we have partnered with other agencies that want the public to know that other agencies are here and they are helping us out. A lot of time, uh, people want a quick fix, but we want these people to go to mobile, we want them to go to federal prison, and not just get a status report. So do know that we have other agency here and they are helping us out.
Thank you. They just need to hear something, and know that you are on a plan, stopping together, and you got to fix some of these issues, you know. Thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Jensen, the day Councilwoman Jane Thomas. Go ahead, Council, Ms. Johnson, I mean, uh, Jensen.
Mayor, I have a question for you, please. The wire six, uh, the city on the city, uh, that was. He took it on with that, um.
Nah, you're right.
That was, he talked about that, uh, the word, the thing, the thing, the wrong, I wonder, I don't know, it's just that. Well, you, Storm shelter, yes, storm shelter. But it's a little small name on it, saying, say, the storm shelter, yesterday, Ryan By, nobody would see it, it would be visual. I can get those better, maybe enough, but city to see, that is a storm, storm shelter. And also some kind of sign directing them to where storm shelter deals, uh, but on the way outside, uh, involving the city.
The, the storm shelter is affected, maintain, uh, Dallas County E M A, or emergency management. And, um, I'm, I'm certain that that's a conversation that we can have to appropriately label it so that people don't wear these.
I guess I've got that written to, you know, showing where it's at.
We, we can, with a sign, if you will, set a storm shelter, that's a, that would be a public works issue, and that could happen as well. It's just, Councilman, you know, you know, knock on the door, come by, and I'll set up my, 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 to talk with, uh, E M A director, and you can, you can walk in there plus.
Councilwoman Johnson.
I want to ask this to you, chief, um, no, it, it involve, it, it involve the citizens. You know, there, there, there's a lot of things that that's can do to help stop the drought. And one thing, it must be a lot of people in the relationship, yeah. And also, we as leaders, in our, we must set up a daily watch in our community, which we have already have been doing for previous time. We have, we have meetings, board meetings, officers attending our meeting, and giving us updates on things that right in our community. So I would like for, uh, you were there at the time, were part, you are a chief now, and I think that we really fill the gap in our relationship with the police department. And share some of these ten things that, as a, as a, as a, because it takes all of us to work together. And I'm willing to, uh, we have been having it in a while, and, um, what services used to have, they would watch committee meetings where we come together and share our information to help clear up our community. So I think that that would be a big start, I guess, like us to start that one right now.
Yes, ma'am.
Because when we have crimes in our neighborhood, we feel it, and we want to see changes in whatever we need to do to help our community, we want to work on it.
Yes, ma'am.
President.
Yes.
There, you, uh, put some place, uh, back in the beginning, uh, but, uh, I think it's, 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 uh, I've got the names there.
Community outreach, to community police, uh, community outreach, which is, council, uh, which you said, we wanted us to put up a program together and comprehend. We need to have a director to put the program together, but I don't have the time to sit down and draft everything that needs to be met. But if the council is willing to admit to, at least hire a director, so that we can put that issue together, I can see that it works. Because it did work in the past, uh, and that's really the only, we're going to be able to get that kind of engagement, uh, in the community. That is having police officers and outreach people going door to door, talking to people on their boards, in the back, you know. And build the kind of trust that's needed so that grandparents, even non-forces, will be ready to share information, uh, about what's happening in our community.
All right, let me just remind, council, just stick to the, to the, it's not only, it's on everybody, okay, it's on here, okay.
I, I would, I would prefer that we stick to the.
We got a class that person that can serve as a director.
That's not going to be enough, and I said it at the beginning, and so I, I don't want to get into that debate with you. I told you that I, I didn't feel that one person could do what was necessary.
Thank you, all right, Councilwoman Thomas, if you have any.
I just want to say to this body of council, I know we've reached the time to say something, very important, we've got, love and speak. Crime, period. But I just want, who want us to work on.
Agreed, now, uh, anything else, uh, under the mayor's court, that concludes the mayor's court, thank you very much. All right, now we'll go on, I think we didn't have the town reports, we just carried those items. Uh, I think we can move to our next items on the agenda. We discussed the bid reports, we discussed the meetings at work session, so therefore, we don't need to go into the report at this meeting. So now we move on to unfinished slash new business. Earlier at the beginning of the meeting, uh, we did add two items, uh, to be discussed, uh, under unfinished business. Uh, and I thank the council for allowing those two items, uh, I want to have a copy of it yet, uh, but this is the agreement between the city of Selma and Dallas County provided for collection of city Selma property taxes by the Dallas County Tax Collector. And this is the actual agreement with the county. We have voted on this matter before, ladies and gentlemen, but we need to vote on the agreement to allow Mayor Purvis to sign for us. Uh, so that our taxes can start being collected by the county as of October one. Because we want to start collecting at all the oil taxes starting October one, uh, for, uh, that calendar year. So we've had this agreement before that flies under unfinished business, but this was sent back to us by the attorney for, uh, the county, Attorney Kelly. It all is, is authorization, uh, for the mayor. Uh, Judge approbate Jiminon has already signed it, and so it's awaiting Mayor Purvis' signature. And we need to vote to allow him to sign this document. All right, any questions? We discussed this before, uh, in, at law, we discussed it. So now it's time to vote on this agreement between the city of Selma and Dallas County providing for collection of Selma, city of Selma property taxes by Dallas County Tax Collector, effective with the taxes due and payable October first, twenty twenty two. And the link is not paid by December thirty first, twenty twenty two. We're all familiar with that procedure in paying our taxes, and we know that we have entered into agreement with the county. So is there a motion to approve, are there any questions? I don't want to ramble, are there any questions? Here are no questions. Is there a motion to approve the agreement as provided by the chair? All right, it's been moved by Councilman Johnson and properly executed by Councilwoman Jane to approve the agreement between the city of Selma and Dallas County providing for collection of city of Selma property taxes by the Dallas County Tax Collector, effective with the taxes due and payable October first, twenty twenty two. And the link is not paid by December thirty first, twenty twenty two. Are we ready for a question? Roll call, my clerk.
President Young.
I have same into a company.
Councilwoman Harville.
Yes.
Councilwoman Christie Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Carmichael. Councilwoman.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Councilwoman Randolph.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jensen.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jamie Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes. Thank you, council, for your votes. And the next item that we added on our agenda for the evening was the program of work with the personnel project for Selma, Alabama, with Auburn University. We have discussed this on numerous occasions, and, uh, and mayor or whoever, correctly, if I'm wrong. But the only addition, the last time we had this discussion, we were about to take a vote on it then, but we had an addition. We wanted Councilwoman Christie Thomas to be added as a point of contact due to her position as the minister, chair of the administrative committee. And so that is included, Councilwoman Thomas is included, and also the effective date of this agreement. Uh, the projected start time for this project is April the eighteenth, twenty twenty two. So the date has been placed here now. And it's anticipated that the personnel policy and procedure project will take place over seven months, a seven month period of time with completion by the end of November, twenty twenty two. And this is the document that we have, the project tonight, so unfinished business. Mayor Purvis, I think, I think in the new additions.
Oh, I think, uh, if, if you would read it, uh, the amount of.
The amount of, uh, uh, maybe a second. Uh, the amount, the total cost of this project as described above is seventeen thousand four hundred and ten dollars and ninety two cents payable to R G E V, uh, H R. And we'll pay that in four different, uh, installments, uh, in May, July, September, and November of twenty twenty two. Last thing will be in November, twenty twenty two, and each payment will be in an amount of four thousand, three hundred and fifty two dollars and seventy three cents. This is not new to this council, we discussed it. Uh, Councilwoman Thomas.
My question is to you.
Yes, ma'am.
To be dry, I want to, uh, the breakdown for this four step, if you want to.
If the breakdown for this four step, if we want to process, how to proceed? Are they going to come back and give us an update on, discuss on what?
They do have a reporting requirement indicated in the agreement. And that's something their sole work, uh, in one, if you read, you'll see where they are going. They're coming, okay.
I read some of them.
Yes, ma'am.
But I had some other, uh, questions that I want to.
Yes, ma'am.
Now we'll bring it up in the next, um, first session.
Yes, ma'am. Well, as a part of this focal work, they are to come back and report, uh, to the council as well as the mayor, and they'll report it to you. And then we also have a point of contact. That's why we agreed to include Councilwoman Thomas. So she'll just know, not to get involved in there today, but just to know what's going on.
And that's why I say the policy procedure that we put in place is the part of the legislative right. And the thing is that whatever they are putting in there, that all people is going to put in there. I don't want them to do like they did before. They did a policy and yet someone came in and did that. And now everyone come back and put another one. And during that time, whatever they're putting in there, as you said, we have a council person. I would like for, uh, for anything to be planned to make sure that we are on the grid of this policy.
Anything that they bring to us has to be approved by the council before it's effective as a law for the city of Selma. So anything that they bring to us, just because they do it doesn't mean it goes into effect. This body has to agree. All right, are there any other questions? Hearing no further questions regarding this item, which has been on our agenda for a very long time. If, uh, their motion to approve the program of work personnel project for Selma, Alabama with Auburn University in the amount of seventeen thousand, four hundred and ten dollars and ninety-two cents with four installments, May, July, September, and November of 2022 in the amount of four thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars and seventy-three cents. Is there a second? Please allow the news to reflect that was moved by Councilman Johnson and properly executed by Councilman Randolph to approve the motion as stated and provided by the chair. Are we ready for a question? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
President Young?
Yes.
Councilman Hargill?
Yes.
Councilwoman Christie Thomas? Councilman Carmichael?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jane?
Yes.
Councilman Randolph?
Yes.
Councilman Jimmerson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jane Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
This is, uh, just, thank you to the council. For both of those votes, oh, there's the votes, especially the one on the transition of the collection of these property taxes from the city to the county. Uh, and this is really a reflection of the kind of relationship the city has now with county government. It is, it is a fantastic working relationship. We are not only doing recreation program, uh, baseball, it's kicked off. Uh, the opening ceremony had over four hundred kids out signing up and playing baseball. Now we have now signed an agreement to move the collection of the property tax to the county. Prior to tonight, the city of Selma was the only city in the state of Alabama that was collecting its own property tax. That has ended. So that's something that we ought to be celebrating. Next, the R G E D initiative. We are moving in the right direction, Council. Thank you for that vote. Now we are in a position to parallel, to align the job descriptions that we already moved with the policy, with the, with the procedure manual for our employees, with the pay plan that will be coming next. And once we get all of that done, we will be in a good place as a municipal officer.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Mayor. All right, those were the two items that were added under, uh, new and or unfinished business. Uh, is there anything else that needs to be discussed at this time? Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Can you give a mic, please?
But I wanted to ask a question, uh, from this, kind of basic that going forty years ago, a lot of cities, uh, dismissing mountain cases, I'm saying, and they were trying. We got some cities in Selma, uh, that have placed many of these cities bounced up and go forty years ago, all of that. So what can we do to that city? As courses, uh, because we can pass on to the mountains. Way back, that, okay, last quarter, dismissing that top, because we don't like to accept forty years.
Thank you, Councilman Randolph, for bringing that up. You did have that on the agenda during the work session. Uh, we are in a major brought it up because we are in the process now of filling positions within the municipal court. We need to get a judge appointed. And we need also, uh, get, uh, defense attorney and prosecutors appointed. So we did the, uh, uh, application process for the judge and also the application process for the defense attorney and mayor. At the work session, we did ask, uh, that those, uh, resumes or applications, uh, be presented, uh, to the council. I think we may have got an email out today, maybe, Mrs. Ellison? Okay, so we did submit that email to you, uh, Mayor Perkins, uh, to give those to the council secretary so that we could begin the process of, of acquiring a judge and a, and a defense attorney.
And you said, and prosecutor. And I wanted to, um, just raise a question. Uh, if they, the council may want to consider seriously whether it should appoint both the defense attorney and the prosecutor in this situation. It could be a problem, so I asked that you really need to set.
So right now, it's just the judge and the defense.
Okay.
Because we, we did not, we did not say yet for prosecutor. This is just the judge and defense attorney.
I'm not sure. There is a question that has to be, and I'm not looking for something to do.
Right.
But I think there is a question as to whether or not the council should turn both of those positions.
And that's why we. But if we can get those as soon as possible, we can get that process started. Okay, thank you. So council requests as a debate for the applications for judge and for defense attorney. Once we receive those, we will get the process started. As all council members come, they go to the interviews and ask questions or do whatever they choose to during that interview process. Okay, we'll set that up sooner rather than later. All right, anything else, uh, needs to be discussed at this time? Any, uh, Council, I'm sorry.
I believe there's been some discussion, uh, SRA contract.
That was discussed at the work session on Thursday night. That is, was, uh, go ahead.
I can set out some reasons that, that everybody make sure. And, uh, we can, we can add, uh, three point six thousand, point five, seven, two, six, five, four, five thousand, first, summary of.
So you are saying, you're asking that we, uh, create a line item with that number you just provided us with, for the amount, in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars, that that will fund the SRA that we thought was in the budget?
That's right. We, we just, we overbought it, a hundred and forty thousand dollars. You just took out a third of ours, or we had bugged it twice for that, so we know we got it in there. No additional, uh, expenditures, no, we already bought this. Uh, we can just add that.
And.
And, and we already.
And Madam Treasurer, you've heard from Councilman Carmichael. Is that feasible? Okay, with that said, uh, Councilman Carmichael, uh, you do have a floor if you choose to, uh, make a motion.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to add my, uh, tourism account, three point six thousand. My other item, don't read it out, we're ignoring, five, seven, two, six, five, and the amount, twenty-five thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, please allow the record for the pledge. The motion as stated by Councilman Carmichael, uh, was executed by Councilman Hargill. Are we ready for a question? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
President Young?
Come back to me, please.
Councilman Hargill?
Yes.
Councilwoman Christie Thomas? Councilman Carmichael?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jane?
Yes.
Councilman Randolph?
Yes.
Councilman Jimmerson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jane Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
President Young?
And I'm saying, uh, one servant on that rule. Thank you. All right, motion passed, so we do now have, uh, a, a line item for SRA. That's an old business that's taken care of and we have discussed on numerous occasions. Thank you, Council, for taking care of that matter as well.
How about the next move?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
This old business was done back in, uh, April tenth of twenty eighteen with the veterans. You know, we did, follow this up. We approved renamed the walking trail next to the stadium to veterans' war walking trail. Did that back with the treasurer. It will be tenth of twenty eighteen. Also, also, we had, uh, project was placed to have a sign placed there. We voted on and have a sign, uh, sign to be made and placed at the walking trail by the council naming the veteran's reward walking trail. And this was done, uh, during our twenty eighteen, which, uh, we, we also had forgotten the amount of money that was supposed to be holding on for, and for that sign. So I would like for, since, uh, it was already put in place and it was already voted on, I would like for, uh, that we, uh, move on that because, uh, it was done.
Okay, so the previous Councilwoman voted on this. What is there left for this council?
We need to get the sign. We need to get the sign, uh, placed there at the, at the trail we wanted to be named.
Okay, so do we have the sign and the cost and all that before us?
Yeah, but I would like for the council, uh, to give this here, uh, minutes on this here.
Okay.
So we will get it right.
Oh, so you let us see the minutes and then we can.
I would like to have a bench to look at this so we can move forward.
Yes, ma'am. If we get those minutes to us, we can take it up at the next work session. Okay, all right, Councilwoman Carmichael?
Yes, and we didn't have, uh, we took the vote, but we never.
Okay, so let's, let's. Play that, just want to hear work site, work session. At the next work session, we'll take it up. Okay, all right, Council, there is no other business before this body to discuss at this time. Yes, go ahead.
And we talked about it in work session. We're trying to have a finance meeting on Thursday night, B M S S is not available. We perform what we need to do. So we're trying to reschedule that for Monday, next week. I'll get myself some follow-up email as soon as I get a confirmation.
Thank you to everyone that participated in tonight's meeting. Council, Mayor, all participants, thank you for watching and using your time wisely. There be no further business or service in council. This meeting now stands adjourned. Thank you.